I had none. Anyone else? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Those in favor approving the minutes, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Select woman Renner.
Aye.
Select woman Ruah.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. That motion carries. Item four, Finance Director, Mary Jane Malavacy. For that one is to receive the monthly report from the Finance Director. Good morning, Mary Jane, and the floor is yours.
Good morning, and first of all, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy holiday and a happy new year, and we're all looking forward to a happy new year. But just in case I don't see you, I wanted to get that out first. We'll start with revenues, and we'll start with the good news. You'll see that tax collection is up approximately where we were last year at this time, at 55.6%. So we've generated a good deal of revenue to this point. Also, the golf course continues to bring in revenue. I guess now with the snow, we probably won't expect much this month, but they are at 93.5% of their budget so far through November. And Public Works, unfortunately, due to all the storms, we have a big surge of revenue at our stump dump. So they have over exceeded their budget for the year. Thanks to them, maybe my revenue figure in my own line of interest will get some help. Very low still at this point, and no clear increase in sight, unfortunately.
Why is that? Mary Jane, this is Charles. Why would Finance... I've noticed a couple of departments are down. Is that more timing issues at this point, like assessor? Why, you know, it's not a big dollar amount, but it's so different?
I'm not sure about... I'm not sure about the assessor. I didn't really look into that. I'd have to check with her, so I'm not sure. Yeah, it's... I really don't know the answer to the assessor question. Some things may be timing, or just that we have less people coming in for services in some departments.
How about your own department? Is there a reason just to just timing again in Finance?
No, that's interest. It's all interest income.
So it's a combination of the rates being lower than expected and not having the investable amounts due to the property taxes being delayed? Is that...
No, it's really purely driven by the interest rates. Our cash flow is pretty strong at this point. Not as high as it has been, you know, throughout these first six months as in prior years, but, you know, we have a good amount still invested. So if nothing else, maybe it should have been a little bit lower at this time, but it's purely the rates rate-driven.
Mary Jane, just to refresh our memories, we've got a substantial portion of this in the state's fund stiff?
Correct. Majority of our investments is in the stiff account, down about 2% from this time last year. We do have some additional funds in the FICA account, which is our new funding mechanism that divvies out $250,000 to banks all across the country. Similar rates there. And then the rest of our funding is in just regular Webster Bank, which we receive a small amount of income. But it's purely the rates down still at this point, which is driving that number.
All right, that's going to be a pretty substantial hold, Phil. I don't see the rates getting much better anytime soon either.
No, I have not heard any anticipation of that getting better.
Where does Natural Resources get their funding or revenue from?
Evan, you want to take a shot at that?
Yes, I can say Kevin's on the line.
My revenue comes from... Is... My budget is the permits for Inland Wellness Commission. Is where my revenue comes in from.
Okay. Any other questions on revenue? Just quickly, Mary Jane, other departmental revenues seem to be running pretty high.
That's because we're receiving our state income back on a normal schedule. Last year, there was some funding issues at the beginning of the year. So we're where we need to be. There's one large revenue that has come in this year that we had to wait till the end of the year last year for. So it's purely just timing.
Thank you.
Sandy?
Yes, the park and rec budget is also lower, and I'm assuming that their original estimated revenue was done before COVID hit. So the reason that their revenues are down, I'm stating the obvious, I guess, is that their programs are down. I mean, they're offering programs, but not to the level.
It's not necessarily programs. They generate a lot of revenue from rental fees of the building itself.
Oh, right, yes.
And unable to do that.
Right, right. So it's... They may not meet their estimate this year.
They may not.
No.
Okay. Anything else on revenue? Expenses?
Expenses are pretty standard at this point, about where they were last year, just slightly higher. I will point your attention to the revised budget column just to show you that the transfers that we made within the budget lines for all of the salaries based on the contracts have been completed. So any of the changes you see there are purely those items that we did last month. So when you look at the salary line items, they make more sense now. So 41% through the year, you should see about 41% of salaries now that we've made those adjustments. Other than that, the departments are pretty much where they would normally be at this time. You know, we do have the higher amounts in Town Clerk and Registrar Voters, which obviously were due to the recent primaries and election. But other than that, pretty much everyone is on track.
Questions for Mary Jane?
Thanks.
All right. Anything on warrants? Probably not, right? We'll get those questions tonight for the Finance meeting. Medical?
Medical, we had another low month, $761,000 worth of claims. And regular claims, our catastrophic claims are up to almost $1 million, with $218,000 being covered. We're at 10.9% there. Revenues are pretty steady. We are projecting a surplus of $833,000. I will add that the town and the Board of Ed met with our consultants to review the budget for the 21-22 year, and the consultants did note that they are as unsure at this point what the effect of COVID will be, whether or not people will come back and have those surgeries that they might have put off. Clearly preventative items pretty much come around once a year. So even if you didn't go to the dentist last year, you're probably going to go this year, and you wouldn't go any more times to the dentist, things like that. But so we have met on our budget. We'll talk more about that through the budget presentations. But it's really up in the air right now.
Mary Jane, and not to get ahead of ourselves, as you are pulling those numbers together, the preliminary estimates from our consultant, how do they look relative to this account? Would we be looking at flat funding or nominal increases?
Well, we are going to be recommending a slight decrease in the medical, and that is for the town, a couple of reasons. Again, the shift between of population this... Last year was not in our favor. This year, it is in our favor, so ours comes down a little bit. And after meeting with Linda Tredau, we have come up with a recommendation of using a small amount of the reserve in medical to also offset the medical next year. So on the Board of Ed and the town side, we're proposing a slight decrease.
So you're suggesting using some of the surplus in that account to offset the increases on the Board of Ed side?
Yes, some on the Board... A portion of it to the Board of Ed and a smaller portion to us.
All right, that's something that I think we had agreed upon, that all three boards would weigh in on that, including the Board of Finance. So my assumption is they will be brought into the loop on that.
Absolutely. At this point, it's just our preliminary recommendation.
Thank you. Other questions on medical benefits?
Yeah, I do. I have a question actually on the report, and I have a feeling this has come up before, and sorry if it's redundant, but I sort of feel like the first cousin to this report is the OPEB account that we're building. And I'd either like to see that report, and if we have a reporter, that balance, if we have the balance separately, or if we could tuck it into here somewhere. Because I always feel like, you know, with $7 million sitting in this account, that's a potential location for some of that money. So I don't know, if it clatters up this report and it's inappropriate, I get it. But in your half a dozen reports that you give us, I would like to see that, how much money we have in that OPEB somewhere, somewhere.
I guess I want to clarify your question. Are you questioning how much we have set aside for the fund?
Yes. Go ahead, go ahead.
So we have $1.2 million set aside in fund balance. Right now, it's in the general fund, fund balance.
Okay.
Or OPEB, and until the trust fund is actually established, that's where it will remain.
So you have a dedicated surplus account?
Correct, with a committed fund balance. Similar to the ones we did the, you know, last month, where we set aside other funds, like for transportation and for sidewalks. It's a similar line item for OPEB. It has 1.2 million in it.
What do you estimate the timing to establish that fund?
Sorry, Charlie?
Well, Peter Barrett and myself are working on finalizing all of the paperwork with the help of Attorney Cohen from Shipman &amp; Goodwin. So we hope to get that moving as quickly as possible. We did have a few additional questions on the language in the documents that we are working on. So as soon as they are finalized...
So we'll have it this year?
Oh, it'll be this fiscal year. Yes, it'll be this fiscal year.
That the trust itself will be created?
Correct. Once the trust is created, then we can move that $1.2 million into it.
Fine, and when that...
After then it's established, to lose point, it could become a line on this report or something.
Or somewhere, a separate document, whatever. I'd like to see it.
You would probably see it with the Pension Committee. The Pension Committee will be managing that fund, so there will be, in the same way we report the pension fund spreadsheet with dollars. Clearly, the OPEB will be a much shorter spreadsheet, but it would be presented similarly. And at any time, I could provide that information to the Board of Selectmen.
Though I think at some point in the future, once we start drawing down on the trust one, which we don't anticipate happening for some time, the expenses related to those who are enjoying health benefits in their retirement phase would be covered by the trust itself. So they'd see a transfer or revenue source into the medical account. But we are still several years away from that being a reality.
Right, the idea is to, over the next five to seven years, bring the trust fund up to a balance where it can sustain itself moving forward. At that time, we will start to transfer the cost of OPEB from the OPEB trust and reimburse this medical fund, because the medical fund currently pays for current medical, current employee medical and retiree.
Okay, okay. Wonderful, thanks. Great to hear that it's moving along.
And Peter's here too, so he'll hear that we want to add it more. He knows.
There'll be a spare time.
Right, so I think to the larger question, I would anticipate we would make another transfer from the medical account to the OPEB once we have the final audit completed, the audit finally completed, so we can confirm what these numbers are. And at this point, you know, I think we could easily see ourselves moving another million dollars into the OPEB trust based on this report that would still leave us with nearly $6 million in reserve. But, you know, I'm not sure of the size of what Mary Jane and Linda are going to be proposing we utilize from this for the offset next year's costs. But still, that's a substantial, substantial amount of money sitting on the sidelines.
Yes, even with the amount that our consultants feel would be very conservative to hold on to, depending on what happens with COVID, we would still have at least that million dollars to transfer.
Thank you. Any other questions? None? Thank you. Mary Jane?
Thank you.
Item five, Police Chief Butch Hyatt. Item five dot one will be to discuss and take possible action to purchase two 2021 Ford Explorer police utility vehicles from Genghis Ford. Good morning, Butch.
Good morning, everybody.
Oh, wait, I'm assuming this was out of the capital plan for fiscal year '21?
It was. The funding was approved through the capital plan, and either these are now the purchases coming from that line.
Okay. Just a quick question. Have we gotten to the point where we're comfortable with hybrids or electric vehicles for emergency service police vehicles?
I think so. As you remember, about a year and a half ago, when car 13 was totaled in that accident, we were able to get a hybrid. The problem right now is trying to get our hands on hybrids through Ford with COVID and everything. They had some issues with shutdowns. I think I talked about it a little bit during our capital meeting last month. So these are not hybrids, but we are looking to go to get some hybrids in the future as soon as things start straightening out a little bit. We are seeing some good, but three miles to the gallon more with the hybrid than the regular cars. So there would be some savings if we can get those.
Shame that availability isn't keeping up with our needs and the demand in general.
Right now, right.
Any questions on this from anyone? All right, is there a motion to approve the purchase of two 2021 Ford Explorer police utility vehicles, which includes the standard police vehicle package, as quoted, for $67,430 from Genghis Ford?
So... I'll second that.
Any further questions or comments? Let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Select woman Renner.
Aye.
Select woman Ruah.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Five dot two, consider and take possible action on the outfit of two 2021 Ford police vehicles. Butch, this is the, you know, fitting up the vehicles with the equipment needed to make them operable.
That's right. That includes everything, including the cages for the prisoners, all the lighting, sirens, weapons systems, you know, for long guns in the cars, everything that goes into that car to make it, to turn it from just a regular vehicle into a police vehicle, including the cameras, which we are replacing the mobile video cameras on those. In the past, we've switched cameras from car to car. Unfortunately, those cameras now are getting toward the end of life, and we are requiring now to purchase cameras to put new cameras into the new cars when we get them, to replace those old ones.
That leads to the larger question. I think Lou Federici usually asks this question. Is there anything in the current vehicles that can be retrofitted or used in the new ones?
Yeah, so what we do is Ford doesn't always cooperate when they make their models and keep everything to the same dimensions. But anything that we can use from the old cars, we typically do. As I said in the past, we used to rotate the cameras from one car to another. But, you know, some of those mobile cameras now are eight, nine, 10 years old. They are well beyond their life expectancy and time to replace them. But anything that we can replace, the vendor does replace when we can.
Any other questions?
I just want to know, it appears simply that the Solis Garage is simply a Department of Genghis? Is that...
Yes, so Solis Garage, Solis does a lot of public safety, law enforcement, fire, fire, police, ambulance, outfit, and work on emergency vehicles, much like MHQ does. There's a couple of vendors in the state. Solis is also a, and I don't know how this works, but he is also a consultant and salesman for Genghis Ford. And I think that that happens in a couple of different areas. There are vendors that do that because they have direct access to working with the public safety community. So he does all the work, and he also has the availability to sell the vehicles as well.
Yeah, that's what I noticed, is that they're effectively the same person, and there are no issues with that, I'd assume.
No, and we've been using Solis for a long, long time. Actually, because of the way he works, he's able to get us some better pricing, sometimes even better than state contract for the vehicle purchases.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Is there a motion to approve contracting with Solis Garage in the amount of $32,312 to outfit to the two new 2021 Ford police vehicles?
Make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
If there are any other questions, comments? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Select woman Renner. Select woman Ruah.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Butch, thank you very much.
As again, thank you for your time. Appreciate moving this forward. Thank you.
Absolutely. Item number six, Human Rights Commission. Joe Keel is going to be making the presentation on behalf of the Commission. And six dot one, this is discuss and take possible action on recommendation from the Human Rights Commission with regard to the Whitfield documents on display at Town Hall. By way of a little background, I received an email from Barry Felsen, who is on. Good morning, Barry. This is some time ago, relative to some documents displaying the purchase of the land from the Native Americans for the town of Guilford. There's a deed, there's some contracts and some photographs and stuff. It's right across from the tax office. And Barry brought to my attention with a question as to the appropriateness of those documents being there, given the sensitivities to some of the issues around us maybe having taken advantage of the indigenous population when the town was founded. So Joe, I asked the Human Rights Commission to take a look at this for their perspective, and I also, I think I see several of the other members. Juan Kolberg is on, I believe. I thought I saw Jack Evans come on board. Who else is here, Joe? Can you see?
I think that's all of us from the Commission. And if I could, I'd actually like to take a moment to introduce Juan. He's been our vice chair for the past few months and will be coming on board as co-chair in January of 2021, and we will be co-chairing the Commission together for 2021. So just want everyone to have an opportunity to meet him, since we're both here today.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm going to indulge myself here for a moment. I'm thrilled to have Juan on this Commission. I met Juan virtually after one of the storms in August, where Eversource was less than responsive to the needs of many of us in this community. And Juan and I were going back and forth on talking about Eversource and how potentially I could help try to move the dial. But nonetheless, we wound up having some interesting discussions. And I said to Juan, I said, "Have you ever considered getting involved in a border or commission in town? You sound like a smart individual. Your background sounds very interesting." And he said, "Oh, yeah, I think I might." And lo and behold, he's now a member of the Commission. So Juan, thank you very much for dedicating your time. Joe, floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. So I sent out both the copy of the recommendation and Mr. Felsen's email to all of the board members through Tracy. I'm not sure if everyone received that.
Yes.
Great, so we actually had two public meetings on this issue. The reason we had two is because the email inviting Mr. Felsen to the discussion on the subject did not go out for the first meeting due to a technical error on my part. So we held a second meeting in which Mr. Felsen was able to join us. And also, part of the discussion around this recommendation, Joel Heilander was a very active participant in the discussion. He sent a lengthy email after very kindly taking the time to research these documents and the history of the purchase, sent a long email to us on this subject, and then also was part of the discussion about this as well. We also had Tracy Thomaselli from the Guilford Preservation Alliance as part of this conversation, and Jim Powers, who is a local author and historian. So we really tried to take into account a variety of perspectives on this issue. And after some discussion, we all came to the conclusion that removing the documents from Town Hall would not be appropriate. But they do serve as potentially a unique opportunity for some community education around the purchase. So what we're proposing is to add two documents to the display, complimentary documents. One that would outline the sort of traditional white colonial perspective on the land deed, and one that would be written by Native Americans that would reflect the Native American perspective of the land purchase. One of our members, Eric McDonald, is a member of the Skat'k' tribe, and he's been leading conversations on this issue at the Commission meetings. He unfortunately couldn't be here today to speak because of work responsibilities. But he would be sort of leading the subcommittee on this project. And Joel Heilander, Tracy Thomaselli, Jim Powers, and Mr. Felsen have all expressed interest in being a part of the subcommittees that would be drafting these documents. So we would absolutely be relying on the wisdom of our town historians and also be looking, I think, to my knowledge, for possibly the first time, at going directly to Native Americans for their perspective on this. on this. I'm sure many of you are aware that Native American history, part of Native American history, is an oral tradition. So we don't feel that it's appropriate to rely solely on historical records that have been in print and have been primarily written by whites for this project.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any other of the commission members that want to comment on this?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you meant the Human Rights Commission.
Yes, yes. Yeah. I did mean the Human Rights Commission.
Okay, sorry.
All right, hearing none. And board members, any questions or comments?
Yes. So Joe, the gentleman from the Native American tribe is, was his first name Eric?
Yes, Eric McDonald.
Okay, thank you. So he, he is, it sounds like he's in complete agreement with this solution to treating this particular situation.
Yes.
Rather than removing the original doc, well, not original, but the documents that are hanging there now. I just wanted to be absolutely sure on that. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Joe? I have a comment. First of all, for Mr. Felsen, I just want to express my appreciation for you bringing this up. I think that these days, we all have to be eyes and ears to anything we see that doesn't sit right. So thank you for doing that. My other thought is, I want to make sure that my colleagues on the Board of Selectmen have seen the correspondence from Joel Helander, from Jim Powers, and from Tracy Thomaselli. Has everyone seen those?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, we, we had those, I guess, when, excuse me for saying Barry. Hi Barry. For, when Barry's letter first came in in June, I believe Joel's comments were fairly quickly, well, not quickly, but they were produced soon after that. It was, it was a lengthy comment, if I remember correctly.
I thought I saw something dated October. Is that possible?
I don't, I don't remember. I just remember seeing them.
So if there was something more recent, we might not have seen it. So that might be, Joe, if you can possibly see if there was something more recent that should be circulated, that would be appreciated. That's my concern. I mean, I think those letters were, first of all, fascinating for anybody who's interested in Guilford history. And I also want to say, one of my first reactions to this was, you know, I wonder what Carl has to say about this. So that's, I want to acknowledge that. But I think it's important to send Mr. Felsen's letter around and not some of the other commentary. Might be a way that people could see a piece of the, of the issue and not the entire issue. And that's how misunderstandings get started sometimes. So I just want to make sure that we all have all the information. And ideally, anything that's circulated is part of a more complete package. That's my comment.
I believe the latest emails that we have on this subject were from October. This got discussed at our November meeting, I believe. But I will absolutely go back and double check.
Thank you.
And make sure that you all have all of the emails.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the board? I applaud the commission for coming to the decision they made. I think it's a very reasonable and well reasoned response. However, Barry, I would like to give you the opportunity to comment as well, since you began this journey with us. So Barry, any comments you have?
Yeah, thank you. I will tell you that being part of the conversation with the Guilford Human Rights Commission, it was an incredibly respectful conversation. And I think that everybody's position evolved as a result of that. I am happy with the recommendation, as I understand it, although I didn't, I don't think I've seen the final copy of it. But based on that meeting, it makes sense to me. Joe, can I just ask, was the recommendation also to change the location?
For, for this particular recommendation, this was what's before the Board of Selectmen today. We are just recommending simply that we add educational materials and that the Human Rights Commission be tasked to draft these materials, of course, along with, you know, with subcommittees that would involve the town historians. And so if, if we were given permission to do that, we'll then submit second recommendation that would involve potential change of location within Town Hall, along with, you know, pricing of print materials, framing, sizing, and of course, the language of the materials themselves. So this is, today is very much just a preliminary getting the ball rolling. Yeah.
So, so again, I appreciate what the, what the Board of Selectmen is, that the Board of Selectmen is open to hearing this. I appreciate the work that the, the Human Rights Commission did on this. And I guess you can say, because I'm, because I have now volunteered to be involved in the, in the process, that I support it.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion to have the Human Rights Commission move along the guidelines that have been outlined here to create the documents for display alongside the thing. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion now.
Second?
A second.
Any further discussion or questions, comments? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Select McFederici?
Aye.
Select inhabitant?
Aye.
Select woman Renner?
Aye.
Select woman Ruah?
Aye.
Selectman Hoyt is also an aye. I just want to take the opportunity to thank Barry, as well as the commission, for moving, moving this process through. These are difficult issues in difficult times, and I think you've come with, come to a very reasonable conclusion. But more importantly, I think a process worked. This, this is, this is ample evidence that having the Human Rights Commission to weigh in on issues of this nature is something that the community as a whole will benefit and obviously has benefited as a result of your actions today. So thank you very much for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Good. All right. Item seven, environmental planner Kevin McGee, seven dot one, he's asked us to consider and take possible action to designate the Conservation Commission as the managing agency for the Braemore Preserve, Meyer Huber Preserve, James Valley Preserve, Long Hill Estates Open Space, and forested portions of the Dudley Preserve. Kevin, the floor is yours.
Okay. Happy holidays, everybody here. One came recently, a former member of the Conservation Commission and member of Lance stewardship group. They're asked about Long Hill Estates East Open Space, and who's going to be managing that, and recommended that the Conservation Commission be in charge of that. And Matt got a copy of that email also, and started the ball rolling. And I figured, since we're going to be looking at that one there, we should also be considering our other properties, which the Conservation Commission oversees for the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Selectmen are still the managing agents for. And as managing agents of Board of Selectmen would be responsible, the commission's been back and forth regarding bike use, horse use on these properties where these issues should, are better handled, I see, by the commissions instead of keep on coming back to the Board of Selectmen to handle. So recommending that, I said, the Braymore Preserve, Meyer Huber Preserve, James Valley, the forested portions of Dudley Preserve, and also the new Long Hill Estates Open Space there. Familiarization of the properties, the Braemore Preserve located up in the northern end of town on Route 77, across from Bluffhead Farm, 95 acre parcel purchased by the town in 2000, with a matching grant from the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protections Open Space Grant Program. So this one does have restrictions on the property. Meyer Huber Preserve located on Germ Road, Jason to Meyer Huber Pond, it's a 16.9 acre parcel purchased in 2002, also with a grant from the D P. James Valley Preserve, a 71 acre parcel purchased in 1999, also with a grant from the state. This is probably our furthest northwest portion of land owned by the town, and also probably almost the northern west corner of the town in general there. The Dudley Preserve, which is located on the intersection of County Road and West Street, the town got this one in 2003. It's a total 141 acres and comprised of basically three individual parcels. There's a 40 acre parcel located on the north side of County Road, is actually on the sort of the northeast side of County Road. There's a 65 acres, which is on the south side, which does contain the two open fields. Those fields are combined acreage, probably about 20 acres or so in general there. The third piece is a 38 acre parcel, which is located on the west side of West Street, heading up north there. This probably does contain property restrictions, except for the field area, to be held for natural preserve, scientific, educational, aesthetic purposes. And then our newly, our new property, which we're currently working on getting the proper maps and deed filed for, is the Long Hill Estates East Open Space area there, which is just north of Baldwin School and interconnected to the, by trail systems down to the Bitter Park area there. This new, newly acquired piece is 51.7 acres in size there.
Kevin, thank you. Kevin, most of these easements and the nature of how we've gotten them clearly define the use of those properties, correct? So it's not as if the Conservation Commission has the authority to change the use of those properties. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement. Yeah, they're all restricted for the conservation of the natural resources there. They do allow for some, some trails, but nothing really further than that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members of Kevin? Hearing none. Is there, is there a motion to designate the Conservation Commission as a managing agency for the Braemore Preserve, Meyer Huber Preserve, James Valley Preserve, Long Hill Estates Open Space, and forested portions of the Dudley Preserve?
Some vote.
Second?
Second.
Further questions, comments?
Yeah, I have just a procedural question on this, Matt, which is, I have the agenda item and the map, which is attached to it. But it's just not a big deal. But normally, there would be sort of a separate memo, sort of saying exactly what it is. Are we assuming that the agenda item is precisely what would have appeared as a recommendation that we're acting on?
Can you restate that for me?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the item that we're addressing contains a map, which is very helpful. And then the agenda description, very often when we're asked to vote on something like this, there would be a memo sort of saying, this is what is being recommended. And I presume what we're voting on exactly is what's stated in the agenda item.
Yes, we are.
Is that right?
And then, yeah, there is no supplemental backup, written backup. Suffice to say, Kevin's presentation would encompass, would, would basically be considered the backup here, even though it's not.
Sure. It's clear. I get it. I'm just purely procedural. I totally, totally get it, and I support it. So I'm, I'm, the minutes, I guess, will reflect exactly what's in Kevin's description on the agenda point seven one.
Lou, I mean, basically what the motion is saying is simply that we're, we're appointing the Conservation Commission to manage those properties.
Yeah, no, it's not that I don't understand it. I'm just, just, I get it. I get it. I support it. I'm just, I'm just trying to confirm what the record's going to show. So I'll, I'll back off. Everybody else seems to get it, and maybe I'm nitpicking.
Is that an aye?
Yeah, it's an aye. Thank you, Charlie. Well done. That's the best way.
All right. Well, Select McFederici is an aye. Select inhabitant?
Aye.
Select woman Renner?
Aye.
Select woman Ruah?
Aye.
Selectman Hoyt is also an aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item eight is to open and act upon bids received by the Board of Selectmen for the sale of two town-owned parcels of land identified as High Meadow Road, assessors map 86, lot 93A, and Mulberry Point Road, assessors map lot 68. And I have those, I have two bids. And I'll open them and read them off. Okay, bid proposal from Elizabeth Lowe, 429 Mulberry Point Road. And this is for Mulberry Point Road, lot 68, assessor map 16. Elizabeth Lowe submits a price of $500. And let's see. And the affidavit has been signed as well. And actually, and notarized. Okay. And this is one for High Meadow Road, lot 93A, assessors map 86, submitted by Robert Stanko and Vivian Thane, 100 Dover Court, 95 High Meadow Road here in Guilford, Connecticut. The offer for this property is $2,500. And the non-pelusive, non-conflict affidavit has been signed by, by Vivian Thane. So, and by Robert Stanko. So we received one bid for each of these two properties. I'm not sure there's much of a decision we made. The question, let's have a quick discussion. Is the board comfortable with the sale of these two properties based on the bids received? Comments or questions?
What was the process by which it was advertised?
Yeah, it's standard, Tracy, or is Karen online, or Vicki online? I think these, these were advertised in the normal bidding process that we issue for municipal bids in a newspaper of local circulation, as well as we had information, I believe, on the website about it. But we, we, we actually submitted a normal bid package and process.
All right, thanks.
This is Gary. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that each of the adjacent property owners to this property were noted.
Yes.
Fabulous.
Thank you for that clarification, Gary. Anything further? Is there a motion to accept these bids for these two properties, as I've read into the record?
Some vote.
Second?
A second.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, try your minds. Select McFederici?
Aye.
Select inhabitant?
I assume, I assume we're voting on both of them at once?
Yes, we are. We are. You know, why don't you? Okay. Attorney Barrett is suggesting that we vote on them independently. So can we revise that motion? Who made the motion? So?
I'll amend my motion to recommend the first of the first property in Mulberry Point.
Wonderful. Has it had a second?
I'll amend my second to the same.
There you go. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Call the question. All in favor? Select McFederici?
Aye.
Select inhabitant?
Aye.
Select woman Renner?
Aye.
Select woman Ruah?
Aye.
Selectman Hoyt is also an aye. That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the sale of the? Is there a motion to approve the sale of the High Meadow Road property as, as bid?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Try your mind, Selectman Federicius?
Aye.
Selectman Haber?
Aye.
Selectman, Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruop?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks, counselor. Item nine, discuss and take possible action on police and fire department revisions to the capital plan request. I had received an invitation to meet with the respective chiefs, Fire Chief, Fire Chief Hershaw and Assistant Chief Chov, as well as Police Chief Hyatt and Deputy Police Chief Massey about their respective capital requests that were presented to us earlier. And this is a, how do I say this? They, they have come up with an idea about combining their respective needs into a single project. So I'm going to open it up to either Butch or Charlie or Mike or, or Chris. Who's, who's going to handle it?
As, as the Board of the where we were asking for two bays on the end of the fire station here for expansion, once we found out that the PD also had a critical need for storage, we approached the PD to see if they were willing to go into a public safety storage building that both agencies could use and share. And the end result would be a considerable, a potential considerable cost savings to, to the town and a very functional building for both of us.
Just, so, so I know it's early in the process, but have you guys got an idea of, you know, what it's going to be and where it's going to be on the property, that kind of thing?
We're looking now preliminarily, we're working with architects. We have preliminary work from Noyd's Void, the architect for this building. And then as per meeting, we're looking to get some more confirmed numbers or better pricing using, we're going to have to pay for an architect, but I believe you said we could look at using the contract services for architectural or engineering to kind of firm up the pricing and make sure that it will work.
Agreed. Okay. All right. So this is, I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention because this is, this is a revision of what you saw presented at the Capitol Project Meeting.
Could we get a feel for where the location of it will be in size?
Yep.
What's the size?
It doesn't have a exact size.
Yeah, it is like 6,800 square feet. Are you on?
Hang on, you're off.
Yep. Okay. I believe you don't want to ask the question. The approximate size we're looking at is about 6,800 square feet. Don't hold me exactly on that number. 6,400 square feet. So I already corrected myself at 400 feet, square feet. And the location on the property is either going to be on the, we can use one of the parking spots, well, one parking spot, but one parking lot, or the possibility of using the, the basketball court property. We're still taking a look at what our options are.
How big were the bays that you were originally discussing?
We were talking about 80-foot bays. But that's, that again is, is, is something that we can discuss with the architect to make a fit on the site.
And how many bays?
It would be a total, originally, we were just talking about doing four bays, four bays at 80 feet deep. We may have to make some changes to that.
How, how much was the projected cost for the, the fire part of it? And how much was the projected cost for the police part as two separate, you know? What, what were the costs originally presented for both departments?
To, to add the two bays onto the firehouse, which would be entirely different construction than what we're proposing for this building, would be about 1.5 million. The preliminary estimates that we came up with here for this building as described is between 736,000 to 800,000. And I believe the PD, and I believe the PD has $275,000 in their budget or capital good quests.
Right, 250. We put 250 in there. We do, we do not have any quotes or anything on that yet. And ours was to build another carport on the property. So this would, as Charlie said, make sense to combine the two into one spot and take care of both of our issues at the same time.
But wouldn't a carport need to be nearer your building?
Excuse me?
Wouldn't a carport or, or the, or a building that uses, you know, for a carport, wouldn't that need to be nearer your building?
It, it, it would. The carport we have now is nearer the building. The carport that we're proposing is to fit a lot of our other equipment or command post.
Okay, it's not for the?
Our area of all things that are used every day. And actually, a closed building offers some other storage options that, that we currently don't have. And I know, you know, Charlie was looking at some of the same, same things with his stuff, but we were looking at, you know, the, the carport would offer us out of the weather storage for the equipment.
Okay.
But a building would now offer us the ability to move some equipment that we have here at Graves Avenue. You know, we have stuff stored all over that would be nice to have in one place, particularly when the storms come. We, you know, we have to leave here to go to Graves Avenue to load up sawhorses and signage and cones and things like that. And to have it on property to be able to have it ready to go would be, would be much, much easier.
Yeah, I, I know we're in a very preliminary stage even for location and everything, but with the potential of, of exploring the southern piece of the fire department building and the basketball court, would that potentially mean the elimination of the basketball court?
Yes, it could.
Okay, looking forward to the next step, I guess.
And just to remind folks, we are currently in the process of the final, the phase two evaluation of the Thane property as to, so we can fully close on, on that and utilize that, that building for storage, some of which, most of which would come out of the old Public Works facility on Graves Avenue. And thereby this, I think Butch indicated you got about a 30 by 50 space in there for stuff that you're storing in that facility. So this would, this would be able, we'd be able to find a home for that, hopefully, allowing us to completely vacate the Graves Avenue building and then put that back on the market. So anyway, any other questions?
I guess that, this, I realize it's very preliminary, but I kind of think from a public perception, taking away the basketball courts would be the last choice here if you were relocating them. But just to eliminate them, I think that would be a shame. So I would urge both departments to try to not have that happen, I guess.
Thank you. Mary Jane?
I just want to confirm what I'm going to do to the capital plan. So I'm going to remove the vehicle port from the fire department's capital request of 250,000. And I'm going to change at the moment the fire department's request to the joint building for 800,000, just for discussion purposes moving forward. Is that correct? Ken Wilson is shaking his head.
I, I think we should have a little bit more than 800,000.
That's why I'm asking the questions.
Right, because we don't have a hard number yet, but, you know, I, I think if you give us a little bit more money, a million or 900,000.
Seems a little early to be putting numbers on it.
Yeah, I, I agree, Charlie, but.
Now, why don't we leave the capital request as they stand for now until such time as the respective departments can get us an updated number. And they, they know they're under some tight timelines to do so. Because we, you know, we hate to say it, but in less than two months, we'll be putting a, we'll be recommending a budget to the Board of Finance. So we need to, we need to move quickly on it.
That's fine.
Anything further? Now, thank you very much for the spirit of cooperation between the two departments. I think that's, that's great work, great thinking, and it makes sense for the taxpayers. So thank you very much. All right, item 10, discuss and take possible action on the Governor's extension of executive order allowing municipalities to prefer tax payments or suspend interest. I don't know if you've had a chance to read the Governor's executive order, but there's some, there was some guidance that came out yesterday, actually, from OPM. And I had, when I saw it, I, I asked Pete if my interpretation of this was correct. Basically, it, it requires you to continue, it doesn't require you. It assumes in the executive order that if you participated in the program, the deferment program in, for the July 1 tax date, you would automatically be, you would, you would automatically be involved with this second phase, the January 1 deferment, unless the board acted to change which of the options or add a second, because as you recall, we did the deferment only. We didn't do the low interest, the, the lowering interest rate. So we would have to, we don't have to act and it automatically goes into, into effect as our option was for the first phase of this. So that's not very clear, but yeah, Pete, you want to?
All right. So back in April, this board had voted to authorize a tax deferment program under Executive Order 7S at that time. And now, you know, many months have passed, obviously. And now we're faced, and that was to address the July 1 tax obligations. Now we're, we're faced with January 1 tax obligations coming due. Under this new executive order, which is, we're now up to 9R. It does say that, once again, the towns must participate in one or both of those programs. But what it says that, it says if a municipality elects to participate in the same program as it previously did under 7S, then no approval by the Board of Selectmen shall be required. And it doesn't have to be reported to OPM that you're continuing on. So, you know, the, the question here was, and frankly, it's a little awkwardly worded. And that's kind of been acknowledged even by one of the attorneys that was in the room. So there's been a little back and forth among the municipal attorneys. Well, should we be voting on this or not? It says formally, it does not require a vote, but in discussing with Matt, he felt we should bring it, you know, bring it to the board to discuss in case you did want to make a change. It does say if a municipality elects to participate in the same program. So in a sense, it's, you know, we're here to determine whether or not you're electing to participate in the same program. So arguing to take a vote on that issue. So sorry, but that's the, it's a little confusing, but that's how the, the order is worded. And that's the guidance that we received on it. So my thought was, and Pete confirmed this, that if we do anything here, the board just entertains a motion and hopefully approves a motion to affirm our original choice of which of the two programs that we opted, we opted for because we had to choose at least one of them, if not, and potentially both if we wanted to. So my, my, Pete says it's probably a pretty good idea. So I would entertain a motion to?
So we need a motion to not change is what it comes down to?
Exactly.
Okay.
Well struck.
And, and we would not, we would continue with tax deferral and what else?
That's it.
The interest rate?
No, no, not, not the lower interest rate. That, as you may recall, the lower interest rate applied to only those folks who were delinquent prior to the onset of the pandemic, which was the rationale that we used at that time.
Okay.
There is, if there's an appetite for, for changing that, certainly we, we should talk about it. But we talked about that in, you know, in, in light of the report Mary Jane gave about our interest income, you know, some, some, I, I don't, I don't have the numbers at hand.
I, I would support continuing and I would make that motion or whatever is necessary to accomplish that. And frankly, for the biggest reason, I, I think, Matt, it was probably yourself that, you know, emphasized to the citizens though, to not take advantage of the deferral unless it was absolutely necessary. And we've seen that in tax collections, that things have worked out probably as well as we could have anticipated. So I would support continuing as we have.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sandy. Any further comments or questions?
Excuse me, Matt, this is Debbie and Board. Is it possible to waive the application for the landlords? That they don't have to fill that out? Because I believe the date they have to fill it out by is January 1, 2021.
We're going to consider that an administrative decision.
Okay.
There is some language in the, in the order that Pete and I need to confirm. It explicitly says in the Governor's executive order that they have to file, they have to fill out that application or, or file an affidavit. So, but I, I agree with you in, in principle, as we talked last week. Pete and I will, Pete and I will handle that as, as we, as we get a better understanding of the executive order.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I missed is what is the timeframe that we were extending it for?
It's three months again. 90 days, 90 days, not three months. Is that? That could be?
April 1st, yeah.
Pete, yeah, we've got, got February in there too, right?
Well, yeah, the original due date would be February 1, but they're extending it to April 1.
Okay, you got my motion, Kevin.
Yeah, and we have a second from Sandy. Anything else? Call the question. All in favor? No, no, if all in favor, Selectman Federicius?
Aye.
Selectman Haber?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruop?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. Thank you, motion carries. Thanks, Pete. Item 11, appointments and resignations. 11 dot 1, as Act on a Recommendation, appoint Karen Stevens as an alternate to the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire April 30th, 2024. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second?
Second.
Try your minds, Selectman Federicius?
Aye.
Selectman Haber?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruop?
Aye.
Hoy is also an eye. 11 dot 2, Act on a Recommendation to Reappoint Steve Cox to the Pension Committee for a Term to Expire November 30th, 2024. I'll make that recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Let me try mine, Selectman Federicius?
Aye.
Selectman Haber?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruop?
Aye.
Hoy is also an eye. 11 dot 3, Act on a Recommendation to Reappoint Wendy Dockry to the Economic Development Commission for a Term to Expire November 30th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second? Let me try your minds, Selectman Federicius?
Aye.
Selectman Haber?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruop?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. That motion carries. 11 dot 4, Act on a Recommendation to Reappoint John Sullivan to the Economic Development Commission for a Term to Expire November 30th, 2024. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
And a second? And a second? Let me try your minds, Selectman Federicius?
Aye.
Selectman Haber?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruop?
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an eye. 11 dot 5, Act on a Recommendation to Reappoint Russell Campaign to the Building Code Board of Appeals for a Term to Expire October 15th, 2024. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Let me try your minds, Selectman Federicius?
Aye.
Selectman Haber?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruop.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Eleven dot six, act on a recommendation to reappoint Robert Kuzo to, uh, Building Code Board of Appeals for a term to expire October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. I'll make that recommendation. Is there a second?
It says building code, and then under his name, it says golf commission. Which one is he applying for?
Grace? The 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 letter from, um.
Yeah, go by the letter for the recommendation from the town committee.
That says building code from Steve.
Yeah.
But his, he's got an email here from himself. He says, please put my name up for a full term on the Guilford Lakes Golf Commission. But that says ten one twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, I I don't know.
Sandy, nice catch. I think we pass it and make sure we understand what they're saying.
Yeah.
Which, we can appoint him to both.
That's what I was wondering, because some people are on more than one permission.
More than you bargained for. It's what happens when you're not at the meeting.
I'm sorry.
That's good, good, good call, good catch.
He is also on the golf commission, but his term isn't up. So, oh, no, it is. It was September thirtieth, twenty twenty. I would just go with whatever it says on the recommendation for now.
We can always rescind it?
Or maybe we can try to make a quick call to Steve Cops and see and clarify it.
Hey, Tracy, this is Mitch. I don't show him on the Building Board of Appeals on your most recent, um, list, and this is for a reappointment. So I would think it'd be the golf course where he is already a member.
Yes, that sounds right.
And 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 we have, we have his email that says he wants to be reappointed to, uh, the golf commission.
Okay.
I'm gonna amend my motion. Uh, we, uh, reappoint Robert Kuzo to the, uh, Golf Course, uh, Commission. And what would the expiration be, Tracy?
It'd be September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Uh, the expiration's September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Yep.
It's a second.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that makes more sense based on what he's saying.
Yep, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Select, Selectwoman Ruop.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Thank you, Sandy, great catch. Uh, committee reports.
I'll just, I'll I'll follow up with Steve Cops. I thought I had his phone number, but I don't. But I I'll just follow up because I'm on that nominating, uh, committee, so I should know this. So, okay?
That looks like a classic copy and paste, uh, on a dot.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. His phone number's on the bottom of the recommendation letter.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Any reports, anything, Lou, at this point, are you?
Well, we're gonna do town property. The Little Folks Fair.
Yeah.
Wait a second, yeah, I'm working off of, uh, paper form, hold on.
Which, by the way, I would just add, encouraging that people are thinking about gathering groups in June. I I love it.
I know, I felt the same way, but we'll hope for the best, right?
Exactly. Uh, all right, uh, is there a motion to approve the, uh, the application by the community nursing school, uh, for the use of the Little Folks Fair? Uh, June fifth, twenty twenty one, the hour is eleven to four o'clock, but reality, green is a hub of activity from about six o'clock in the morning. Is there a motion?
I, I'll make the motion. I mean, it's a traditional event, and I'm, here's hoping. I mean, they can always pull the ripcord, I suppose, if, God forbid, things are still looking grim.
Yep.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Now, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Uh, Selectman Haber.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Selectwoman Ruop.
Aye.
Selectman Hoy is also an aye. Now we go to committee reports. Lou, anything on, uh, yours on bill?
At the moment, no, Matt.
Good. Sandy, anything on affordable, uh, affordable housing?
Well, um, we did reach out to our contact at, um, um, Neighbor Works, which, um, mutual. I've just lost the name, but you know who I mean, um, New Horizons, I'm sorry. Um, and, um, he was recovering from COVID, so I need to reach out to George again, so hopefully I'll have something at the next meeting.
Good, thank you. Okay, um, correspondence, anything on, uh, public works? Or building department? Hearing none, all business? Uh, new business, I've got one item that I just, uh, want folks to be aware of. At the Pension Committee last, uh, Wednesday, there was substantial discussion around, um, the trend that we've been on, which is to reduce the discount rate, uh, I think, as you recall, that the the discount rate has dropped a quarter of a point, we have dropped it a quarter of a point over the last four years. Um, and the Millman made a recommendation to the Pension Committee to drop it to, uh, from six point two five percent to six percent, which puts it squarely in line with our historical performance in the market. Uh, so they, the Pension Committee will be, uh, uh, formulating and giving us a formal recommendation uh, after their, um, January meeting, uh, on on terms of the discount rate. Now, the discount, by 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 moving the discount rate a quarter of a point, uh, the impact, uh, as, obviously, you know, we need to contribute more to make up for the anticipated, uh, lower return, um, would it would have an impact of somewhere between, uh, a quarter and a third of a mil in that, uh, just on that move alone relative to the increase in our contributions, uh, to meet the actuarial defined contribution recommendations, uh, from Millman. So just want to put that in the back of your mind, um, as we go through the process. That will be some, something we need to make a decision on. Uh, now, we don't necessarily have to go a full quarter. We could maybe go an eighth. Uh, we could do something, uh, maybe do it over two years, uh, to lessen the impact. Uh, because, uh, you know, again, it's very preliminary at this point, uh, that we, and we we don't have a strong feeling for where the budget is at this point. Mary Jane is, uh, is working, and departments are working through that process now. Any questions or comments on that? All right, anybody else have anything on the new business? Public forum, anyone, uh, wishing to address the board in public forum?
I have, I have an issue if, that I'd like to raise. At the risk of becoming, you know, the grumpy old man in the room. This is something that I, Matt, you may recall that back in, I think it was back in June, I emailed you, um, about the distribution of the Shoreline Times.
Yep.
Um, and having the plastic bags thrown into, uh, people's driveways. Um, I did a calculation back then that said there are probably around a half a million plastic bags that would need to be recycled. They're more likely thrown on the trash every year. Um, I'm not sure. Uh, uh, and I, uh, up until the snow, um, I walk every, almost every day, and I walk the same stretch from, uh, the corner of Moose Hill and Peddlers where I live, um, to, um, what's the name of the retirement community? Can't remember what it is anymore. Anyway, thank you. Um, and just in the short stretch between, I started counting the numbers of, um, of Shoreline Times, old ones that were sitting in people's, um, and sitting in people's driveways, sometimes five, six, seven, eight of them. Obviously, people, uh, I I've contacted the Shoreline Times multiple times to ask them to stop distribution. I I, as an environmentally conscious person, I really object to five hundred thousand plastic bags being used in our town, and I object even more to the fact that people don't seem to want, you know, they're not picking them up, um, based on forty to fifty that I see constantly. And I'm wondering if if there's an ordinance that either allows or prohibits people from just, um, throwing things in everybody's driveway. It used to come in, the the post office used to deliver them. Uh, and in these times, with the post office being in such dire shape, I think that if there is a delivery to be made, they ought to be delivered through the post office. Uh, they're now not just an environmental concern, but they're also a litter concern. Um, they're going into storm drains. I've seen a few of those. Um, it just, it seems like, it just seems like something that we don't want in this town, or I certainly don't. So I I'm raising that as a concern. I don't know if there is, um, an ordinance, or if there can be some, and it's not being enforced, or if there should be an ordinance and it have it, and have it be enforced.
Matt, can any of this be adjusted? We've already got a, I don't know if we did it as an ordinance or not, but the plastic bag ban.
Right.
Uh, on the, on the retail side. I mean, it doesn't seem like a big stretch to to, you know, you have a valid point. There's no question. I mean, I even, you know, noticed that they're starting to label the bags, you know, recyclable or some, you know, it puts some extra printing and ink on them, so that makes their their conscience go away a little bit or something. I don't know. But, uh, I I I question, Matt, you know, we already have the the, I think it's an ordinance against the plastic bags, and wouldn't this simply be an extension of it, or even, you know, maybe a letter from the First Selectmen to the Shoreline Times expressing our concern and, uh, and whether or not they are even in compliance with our existing ordinance?
Let me, let me, let me start to parcel some of the answers to that. Um, the first relative to our plastic bag ban is is very precise. It's point of sale, plastic bags, um, point of sale, purchase, plastic bags. Um, that is prohibited, but we can, I I'll defer to, uh, the counsel on on the the formal answer on on that. Um, I do, uh, a- as a result of Barry having reached out to me last summer, uh, I contacted the, uh, the managing editor of the Shoreline Times who reminded me that, uh, they have, uh, they have constitutional right to distribute the papers in that manner. Uh, and I had had conversations with Pam, uh, at the time, and she confirmed that, yes, they do have the ability to distribute them. Uh, they, I I expressed the the concerns that Barry raised, uh, and they understood it. They assured me that there was a process that allowed for folks to opt out, uh, of that delivery. Uh, and I think we actually posted something on our website. I may even have, uh, we probably put it on our website and probably did it on Facebook, uh, trace, you know, refresh my memory. I know we, I know we put something out to the community on that. They also indicated to me at that time that, uh, the instructions to their drivers was if you saw one newspaper that had been there for, uh, you know, since the previous time you you delivered it, their carriers were not supposed to, uh, distribute another one. So obviously, that's probably not happening. Uh, so clearly, I can go back to the, uh, to to the editor and follow up on it. Uh, Pete and, uh, Pete and I will put our heads together whether or not, uh, there's anything in any of our ordinance which prohibits that, uh, and try to validate their ability to do so. Uh, I I will, I will contend that I'm, uh, probably a contributor to this problem. Uh, I am a subscriber to the Navy Register. Because they are prohibited by the postal office from putting that newspaper in my mailbox, um, they they're using plastic bags, and I get the same thing with my New York Times on the weekend. Uh, those arrive in a plastic, in a plastic bag as well. So I think if you use one, if you use one gun to shoot the, uh, shoot down this problem, it's going to have, uh, significant ramifications for those publications that people opt for. Uh, but, uh, I will, I will, once again, go back to the editor, and then Pete and I will put our heads together relative to, well, the the legal side of this thing.
Matt, can I just tell you that I have, uh, I've been in contact probably ten times since I emailed you. When they, you know, so maybe for a week or two, they stopped delivery, and then I've got to contact them again, and I've, I've just taken the position that it's in my driveway, send somebody to pick it up. I I am intentionally trying to be a pain in the ass to the, uh, um, to the Shoreline Times. Um, I think there's a difference between when you subscribe to something and when you don't subscribe to something. And, you know, maybe they need to think about an opt in.
Yeah.
Because I don't recall ever subscribing to the Shoreline Times. Um, they used to deliver, they used to get the post office to deliver it.
Yeah.
Up until six months ago. And now they seem to think it's okay to put it in a plastic bag and throw it in everybody's driveway, whether they subscribe to it or not.
All right, uh, I'll, we'll move along the lines, see what we can do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wishing to address the board in public forum? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Second.
Second, it's a non-debatable motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all, have a nice day.
Thank you, Matt. You're welcome, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Hey, Mr. Hoy.
Hey, what's going on?
Brian from Ohio.
Brian, how are you?
Before I call Steve Cops, I'm confused now. Which one did we actually, um, approve the membership of Kuozo to, the golf course or the, uh, both?
Golf, just golf.
Golf, all right, golf, okay.
I'm betting, I'm betting that was a cut and paste that, uh.
I think you're right, but I just, you don't mind if I check, do you?
No, not at all.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay.
All right, Zionor.
All right, go.
Bye.
Bye.